This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I am opening the meeting for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Regular meeting Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. And we're going to begin with a call to order. I'm going to say your name. Please say President. Norma.
Sorry, muted President.
Thank you. Gage. Gage is not present. Dawn.
Present.
Brian.
Present.
Robin.
Present.
Russ.
He's there.
I see Russ. And we are joined by our Counselor Liaison, David Williams, and our Staff Liaison, Eric Zino, and Meredith. And Meredith, forgive me, I haven't heard your last name enough to even attempt to pronounce it correctly. Citizen comments. I don't see any citizens on here from the public. So I don't believe there will be non-agenda public comments. So I will close that opportunity. Business items. Comments from Council Liaison, Mr. Williams.
No, I really don't have that much to say. We've been working very diligently at trying to hire our city manager. Should be announced soon, once the contract is finalized. When we have it in our possession, I guess the mayor will then announce it. But until that time, we can't announce it. But that's coming down the pipe. Beginning to work on a subcommittee. And I see that's one of the agenda items. So I'll just wait for the agenda item to come up on that one. On the building and building space.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Comments from Economic Development Director, Mr. Eric Zino.
Good afternoon, you. Mr. Chairman, I don't have nothing else to add other than comments from our previous meeting, nothing else to add other than what Council William Williams has said.
Okay. And I don't see our Chamber of Commerce President present, so we'll skip that.
She did, she might jump on later. I did speak with her earlier, but she had another meeting, she might jump on late.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Zino. Um, one thing you guys might have noticed is that what we don't have on our agenda today is anything pursuant to the House Bill 4072. I didn't add that to the agenda because my understanding is it is no longer before the House for a vote. So it's kind of moot to further discuss and make any recommendation to council such as we had originally talked about. But thank you nonetheless, Mr. Pennell, for presenting last, at our last meeting and diving into it. Thank you for that. Action items. Number one, item number four on the agenda, consideration support for continued improvements to Sunset Park to endorse and forward a letter of support as included in the meeting packet. Has everyone seen this letter? Has anyone not seen this letter? Well, I will speak a little bit to this. You guys might recall from our last meeting, if you, if you read through the minutes that Norma put in front of us today, you will have been reminded that it was requested of us to put together a letter and pursuant to helping Sunset Park get the points that they need due to some changes that were made. And it's to that end that I put this letter together and am presenting it to you guys, our committee for review and possible changes and a, and a vote on it for me to endorse on behalf of all of us. And I can then give that to our Parks Director and he can share with the state. Is there any discussion on the actual letter?
Well, Paul, is your understanding, so he'll, he would use this letter in order to garner the resources to move things forward. And I actually had a question, we were, he's, we've got in there the light and turning lane, which I wholeheartedly agree with. But I was thinking that was something that was out of our hands, but is that something that the city can influence?
It is out of our hands. I was trying to just come up with the rationale for why we need the park so that we, we could appeal to the state, you know, hey, this is something we need to go forward. These are some things we need to address. And this was my best effort. But I'm certainly happy if anybody thinks we need to amend it, certainly happy to amend it. And the need, as it was conveyed to me, is the council made some changes to the plan. And I, and I might have this a little bit wrong, so if I'm, if I'm mistaken, please speak up and correct me. But there was a loss of about 10 acres to the original plan. And I believe that that 10 acres was the removal from the park's development plan of a couple's baseball softball fields. And that affected the points that were needed to receive the grant money, which is effectively a reimbursement of money that Lago Vista spends. And it being a point-based system, it was, it was stated that letters of support such as this from the community can help the city get those points back and move, move, move the ball forward. And thus is the purpose of this. I don't know, I think I heard that it may not, yes, Mr. Williams.
Just to correct some, some of what you said, we didn't, we didn't lose any of the park land. It's just that he determined, Chris determined that he could, it would be more beneficial not to have another baseball field and to have other things for other people to be able to do in the park. When they took that out of the grant, it skewed the numbers. So he's trying to talk to the state to see if he can get all these other parts of what he wants to do implemented into the grant. So that's the, that's the only real difference. But as far as losing the land, we haven't lost any of the land. We still have the land. It's just that he didn't want to build another baseball diamond. He wanted to have the different, the other elements that he was talking about added into the park.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Williams, for clarifying that for us. Appreciate it. Thank you for correcting me. With that, is there any other discussion on the letter as written?
I think it's really important that you have this about the entrance because it is, it is spicy at times trying to get in there because it's right at a curve. Yeah, it's, that's really good that's there because I think that, that turning lane would be really important and lights. I don't know what to do to help him do that, but seems an important thing.
Yes, ma'am. If no one else, then I'd like to close the discussion on that. And let's vote. All those in favor of authorizing me to sign this on behalf of the committee and submitting it to council, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so unanimous. Excuse me, I forgot to call for a second. We forgot to go through the formal motion. Thank you. Seconded by Dawn. So I guess, Norm, if you want to note that I made the motion for that vote. Thank you. Agenda item number five, action item number two, update from Eric regarding national sign plaza, visit to Lago Vista, impossible discussion and approval of NSP proposal for builder signage and wayfarer signage.
Paul, it's your, Dylan, I saw your hand up, Don, did you have a question for it to the project?
No, this was, this was just curiosity from, from Dave. And that was, you know, what, what other things were being proposed for the park, but we can touch that later.
I'm sorry, Don, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right.
Give me.
That'll be.
There was something, there was something for the skaters that was going to be in the park. But there was, I can't remember all the elements, but there were five or six different elements that he was thinking that he could have added into the park. But, you know. It just wasn't in the original plan, so that's why he's trying to amend the plan to get, to get the same amount of grant money.
I think that's smart. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
With that, Mr. Zino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm, I see that our executive director for the chamber has joined, so you want to might want to add that to the minutes that she has joined. I don't know if she, you want to recognize her or not, Paul, or have her say anything, but she has joined the meeting.
Thank you. I will, we'll come back to her in a few.
In reference to the NSP, I did speak to Michael and Rochelle this morning. They actually have not, we don't have a proposal in front of us. They were still doing a tour of Lago Vista and meet with some of the home builders in the area before they presented a proposal to us and to council. So at this point in time, we don't have a proposal in front of us from them. And they had requested a meeting, I think they're going to meet with the mayor as well. They actually requested a meeting to speak with Mayor Tippett.
Okay. Eric, by chance, did you, did you tour with Lago Vista with them or did they do it on their own?
They did on their own. Had happened, I've been involved in the tour. They told me they needed me, they would actually reach out to me to be a part of the tour. They have not reached out to me to be a part.
Okay.
Get the buy-in from the home builders at first and reach out to them and let them know what was going on and that they were coming into and trying to get this program started. So I think they were talking with them before any type of, you know, monies or proposals came toward, back toward us.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, I recall at our last meeting, you expressed an interest in, in, in looking into what it would cost for us to just contract with someone directly. Is my recollection correct? Okay. Is that something that anybody wants to, does anybody feel moved to want to maybe do a, create a subcommittee for that explicit purpose? And if so, is the time, do you guys have time for that? So Russ, was that something you'd be interested in looking into further? We can't hear you. Okay. Yes, Mr. John Drew.
Yeah, I believe that what Russ was suggesting the last time, if I'm not mistaken, was that Vistago could, could certainly do similar, similar things.
Gage Hunt.
That's Gage Hunt. I'll see why he's not with us. But anyway, I think it was Vistago was the deal here. So, excuse me.
Yeah, certainly. Give Dawn a moment to ascertain if Gage is going to be joining us and Russ is trying to call in. While we wait on them, my thinking is just that if, if you guys, if we as a committee, if y'all want to create a subcommittee to look into what would the cost be to have this done on our own and try to save the city some money, I'm sure that money could be better allocated to some roads around here.
So, Mr. Chairman, is this committed to bill, get a program for home builder signs or wayfinding signs because?
I'm not necessarily advocating for a committee, Eric, but it would be if, if we can, if we can have somebody build these signs and do it for half the cost and save us tens of thousands of dollars or many thousands of dollars, it might be worth looking into. I don't know the answer to that. But on this agenda item, I recall Russ expressing an interest in, or just raising the question, can we get this done cheaper elsewhere? And I'm bringing this up as an opportunity for you guys, for the committee, to see if they want to delve further into that. That's the sole purpose of me reminding every one of Russ's prior questions.
But that would be for the wayfinding sign because the home builder sign is, is, is free. I mean, the, the home builders pay for that.
City. Okay.
But the wayfinding component of that might be correct, but also keep in mind that they control that too, like with code, we would have to lose the city, we have to use code enforcement when people put up signs in it, in a way that is, does not, on the right of ways of that type of nation. So they kind of control where the signs go and put those on those monumental signs that they are, they are putting into the city and they control that. So it's a lot of other, you know, avenues that go into that when you get to the wayfinding component of that. But these were just for the home builder association signs.
Okay, well, then, go ahead, Russ.
Is my audio working again?
Yes.
And, and yeah, Eric, I would say, I mean, honestly, I'd say, let's get their bid. I would say their bid is probably going to be pretty detailed and tell us where these signs are going to go. And if we can get a Vistago or someone else to print them up, I mean, heck, it doesn't take much for the postal digger and a couple of bags of cement to go put those in the ground. And I mean, if they're on charge, you know, 40 grand, you know, or so to do that. I mean, I know plenty of handyman that would do that for, you know, a small fraction of that. And if that saves, you know, city funds and we get the same result, that's all I was proposing. It's worth, it's worth getting their bid and, and, and looking at.
Okay, yeah, that's the wayfinding component. I think Meredith, you have something to add to that, Meredith?
So I had looked into wayfinding signs and I had pulled together catalogs from different companies and it pretty much outlined all the kinds of styles of signs and also the, the structure, the poles that hold the signage. So it's, it's not just a matter of printing the sign, but it's kind of the whole package, the whole system and making the poles, and you know, that's part of it. So I had given this information to a previous city manager. I think it kind of got, didn't go further with, with the suggestions I had made, but perhaps that's something that we might want to look into. The committee might want to look into other options and what's required of the signs instead of looking at piecemeal. It's just a suggestion.
Are the, are all of things been designed?
I'm sorry, repeat your questions, Robin?
Have all of the, all of the signs, the signs, you're going to look like and the signs, all of that, is that done?
If you're not speaking, can you mute your, we can't hear. Can you mute your microphone if you're not speaking?
It's on, okay.
No, you, you were just kind of breaking up there. I believe you were asking, Robin, if the signs have been, if they would all be uniform and have they been created?
If they were designed, have created and what they look like?
They have not, we have not seen any presentation on, on what they would look like. We don't know what they would look like. Am I correct?
It would kind of look like they actually, they'd had a city that we showed on our last, and that was how they, and somebody, we still get some echo and noise, so if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. So.
Gage just shut up.
Yeah. And also, I think, is everybody aware which signs we're talking about? Have you been in Leander or Cedar Park and know the wayfinding versus the home builder sign? So everyone know kind of which ones are which, because we're speaking in sign in general, but want to make sure we, we are correct in speaking in what the wayfinding versus the home builder sign.
So are the designs for the wayfire, have that not been designed? No. So you can't hear.
Design, I'm sorry, designed by who, Robin? I'm going to make sure.
I just wondered.
Designed by?
Robin, I think the company that is going to do it, that they had a proposal, I think they have a design in mind. We just haven't seen that yet. But I'm sure we will when we get their bids and their proposals of what they're going to do. Am I, am I correct in that, Mr. Zino?
Yeah, the similar to, if I can go back to audio, but the cities that decided they showed us in the previous last month's meeting would be the same thing, it just would be for Lago Vista, Lago Vista versus that city that they show.
Yeah, the only thing I, what I gathered from the last call was that we would have to identify what, which attractions we, we wanted highlighted, right? If we did do that, if you referenced the minutes that Norma sent everyone, item number three, paragraph C for Charlie, we noted to them that we would like to see sign, wayfair signage for both golf courses, library, City Hall, Arkansas Bend, police station, Sunset Park, fire departments, ball field schools, Bucone's, Wobbler, Vista Airport, et cetera. So anyway, they'll put it pulled together at some point and share with Eric. And our hope is to get that quote before our committee and then we can make recommendations as we see appropriate and go from there. So there is no action to take on agenda item number five at this time. It's because there is no quote before us. Nothing else. Takes care of that. On the minutes, all matters listed on item number six, consent agenda are to be considered routine by the committee and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approval for the following minutes, May 11th, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Has anybody not read the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Have a motion from?
A motion.
To approve? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, it was a second from Russ. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes approved unanimously. Discussion items. Agenda item number seven, discuss Paul's presentation to the council of the E, of the EDEC annual work plan. So our city ordinance currently says that the chairman of each of the city's committees is supposed to go before council in June and present on the, on their annual work plans. Did anybody else just get a pop-up, by the way, from no two meeting thing about bandwidth connectivity? Can you guys save your tape, video and audio? Okay. Mr. Will, Mr. Williams, do you foresee an agenda item pursuant to this being on the June council meeting?
I don't think it will be in the June council meeting. I think the new city manager will be, I mean, sometime in, in July. And we would like to have that city council manager, new city manager in place for, for the committees to come in front.
Okay.
But I think it, it would be, from what I remember, the time schedule will be the June or July. And I think it will be more like July, but that will happen.
If you will let us know when you would like, like me to present, just give me as much notice as possible so I can prepare. I appreciate it.
I will, I will do.
Thank you. And if anybody?
I'll try to get you, I'll try to get you a firm date, okay?
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or discuss on that item? Would anybody like to present for me? No, okay.
I'll complete phase in you, Paul.
Thanks. Is that because you're going to be standing there with me out of the council presenting? That's, I'll think.
I'll be in the audience, don't worry.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that, just no further discussion, we'll move on. Number, discussion item number eight, update from Gage Hunt and opportunity for input from our committee regarding the process of devising a plan to build new city government offices. I'd like to preface this a little bit and kind of bring everybody up to speed. The city council, two meetings ago, I think it was, they, they formed a subcommittee comprised of three council members and, and three other members from, from, Don John Drew is on the subcommittee. So we have three council members, then we have one board member from planning and zoning, of which Don John Drew is also a member, and he is that commission's appointee to the subcommittee. Gage Hunt is our appointee to that subcommittee. And then who was the third person? Paul Smith from the Building and Standards Commission. He is on that subcommittee as well. And the six of them are going to dive deep into coming up with and proposing to city council a plan for trying to find a way to, a, a plan for more city offices. We're growing, we need more city offices, we need space, where can we do it? How much for footage? Where would the building be? What can be, I mean, starting from scratch. There was originally a plan that was tied to construction of the new library where the city utilized in co-share office space. They've, my understanding is they're pretty much, they're starting from scratch on the whole library thing. And the idea is, okay, well, let's let that move separately and let's focus on what we can control. And that is, let's get a plan for new office space for city, for our city for that. Unless there's any clarification to that from Mr. Williams, I would open it up to Gage for any feedback you would like to share with the committee. And if there's anything, any input you would like from our committee, I'm sure we'd all be happy to share with you whatever thoughts we have on.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Paul. Yeah, I had to unmute. The, actually, we're just a little bit preliminary on this. The subcommittee is having its first meeting tomorrow. And at that time, I'm sure that Councilman Williams and, and the city leadership will give us a little bit of direction in terms of exactly how we want to approach the project. For example, you know, just what timeframe are we looking at? Are we looking at meeting our needs for the next five years or 10 years or whatever that, that might be? So, once we understand those parameters and how the, the city leadership wants us to approach it, then we'll be able to provide a little more information. Is that fair enough, Dave?
Sure. Mr. Roberts, do you want me to share any information on this or not?
Yes, anything you'd like to share with us, I'm sure the committee would love to hear from you.
Okay. We have an 11-person crew of people that are going to be working on this in this subcommittee. It's myself, Paul Prince, Arch Dabla from council. It's Sandra Barton, it's Roy Gamber, it's Eric Belay, it's Eric Zino. There's one other person from staff and I can't think of who that is. And then the, the P and Z, Don is representing P and Z, Gage Hunt is representing Economic Development. And you said Paul Smith is representing Building and Standards. We'll be laying out the parameters. We're looking at both, how can we solve the problem thoroughly? How can we do, what's our long-term plan? What's our short-term plan? We're going to look at all the city properties that are available. We're going to look at other properties that are out there in the city and determine what's the best fit. We'll probably break into little groups and each one will work on a portion and then get back and look at all the parameters in relationship to cost and availability. And we have like nine different parameters that we have set up to evaluate the different plan. And we have like nine different parameters that we have set up to evaluate the different plan. So it's not just looking at building a building, it's looking at all the different options that are available to the city and determine what's the best fit on a short-term basis and a long-term basis. Does that help?
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so I think it's going to be a good fit. And I think we'll get a lot of different options for us to choose from and to select and figure out, you know, it may be a combination of what do we do for the year, what do we do for the two to five and what do we do for long term? So we'll have numerous options.
That's great.
The other staff member was the city attorney, Eric.
You're muted, Dave.
Yeah, we have. I knew I left somebody out. I couldn't figure out. I didn't have that piece of paper in front of me, so. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And and thank you, Gage, David and Don for getting into this. That's, that's, that's a big job. If there's anything this committee can do to assist you guys, please, please let me know and I'll see. Try to help any way we can.
Will do.
Thank you, guys. Okay, discussion item number nine, report from strategy leads on the following. Norma, support existing businesses. Russ, recruit new businesses. Gage and Don, develop local infrastructure. Brian recommend government policies and programs. Robin, advocate Lago Vista. I'll just go through this in the order it's listed. And I'll, Norma, with you being listed first, I would point everyone to the minutes where she added the she had her own notes here for what she's done. And I want to say real quick, Norma, you know, you emailed the minutes out today and expressed the regret for the late emailing. Your minutes are spectacular. When you go, when I go through and I look at the city website and I see the other committees and commissions, the minutes, we've always got them on here. You've got timestamps on your minutes. They're really phenomenal. So thank you for the excellent work you do on those. Supporting existing businesses. Is there anything you'd like to share with us? And are there any questions that you have for the committee as to how we can support you and your efforts?
Now, I'll just say that continuing to pursue what I actually had set out to do. May got the best of me and so I didn't accomplish what my heart wanted to get accomplished, but I'm still going to pursue all that. I did want to say I do to reach out. One of the things that is top of center for me, reaching out to Russ about the this year and seeing, you know, what a framework would like, you know, to go after grant money for that and then also to then take that maybe to the Texas municipal or the bar Capcom. Anyway, just those are still in my sights and then maybe with a little bit of Eric to keep me within the guardrails. That, that, that is all I have for today.
Thank you, Norma. I would like to add one thing. I noticed in the Hill Country News, I think it was last week, Leander, I don't know the outcome, but it might be of interest to you. They were having a vote on exiting from their, their contract with, with Cap Metro. And so I don't know the outcome, but you know, reading, maybe looking at their minutes, seeing how, I think that could be a good resource. Looking at how Leander approached that. Does anybody have any discussions, input or anything for, for Norma? Okay, thank you. Russ, do you have anything you'd like to share with, share with us or any questions and anything at all?
Yeah, when we spoke, we've mentioned Darren Westonhever before that have Hamlet co-working that had come out to and given a presentation, maybe, gosh, that maybe a year and a half, two years ago now. I ran into him a couple of weeks ago and he's actually in discussions of leasing one of the buildings out in Lago now to bring his business out and we talked to him about, hey, we were trying to do the incubation thing and he's like, that's exactly what we are evolving into doing as well. And that's what we have in mind with this lease, you know, in Lago. I reached out to him about an hour before the meeting to see if he had any updates on if ink had dried on that contract or not. And I've not heard back from him as of yet, but we'll keep you posted on that, but that's lining up with exactly what we're looking to do.
Great. Great. Great to hear. Anybody have any questions, comments, anything for Russ? Mr. Jandro?
Yeah, Russ, that's great news. Yeah, we studied that, like you say, about a year and a half ago and and I think that the, the results of the pandemic have actually been twofold. Overall, looking at small communities and even larger communities across the United States. First of all, we see the situation that we've been discussing in the past that people are looking for places where they have excellent quality of life and a place that they can, that they can work from at home. And secondly, when they get tired of working at home, they would like to work in a place that's close by their home, but where they can associate with other people, but still not have to go into Austin or wherever it may be. And that WeWork type concept would, would be absolutely perfect. So that's great. I think we'd really appreciate your keeping us up to date on that.
I'll do it. And one of his comments was really in kind of some issues. I see a lot of growth coming to Lago and I want to be a part of it. And I gotta think he's not the only one.
Yep.
Russ, as, as that conversation continues, perhaps if he brings up any challenges that we can help make influence or make a difference on or something. Thanks for always keeping that in mind or reach out to me.
Thank you. Will do.
Yeah, it'd be also good to kind of, if we know what kind of businesses are coming in so we can assess any tax impacts or anything. You know, if they're, if they're bringing in somebody that's going to be doing some online, online selling, you know, the control, there is a comptroller's rule that was issued last year that would divert some of those sales taxes away from Lago Vista. So we may want to take positions to counter that.
Eric, are you, are there any? Is there anybody, is there anything you'd like to add regarding new businesses looking at Lago Vista present?
Were you about to say something, Council Williams?
No, I wait until after you speak.
Okay. Yeah, just, I mean, we, we, as far as new businesses coming to Lago Vista, we, we still have several that are looking. And I think I did speak with Darren there, Russ. Must have been about a month ago and at that point in time, he had not pulled any permits to any of the buildings that we have now or even had land if he was planning on building. So I don't know if he's done that yet, that component of it yet.
He wasn't building. He was going to be leasing one of the existing.
Yeah, that's what I said. He had pulled the permits. He had an existing building after last week that they told me about. But also, we have another business that is going in. I think I talked about it. The candy store has now put their permit, which is Suzanne, who is the her hunter hub in the Wild Navy over in this village. They now have fully the, the permit for the adjacent spot next to them for a candy store. And so therefore, as I told, Anytime Fitness now have their, their own, they had a death. One of their financial partners had an unexpected death. Now they have Hunter Spencer, who's the sole owner of that facility now will be now moving forward with that. If you've been over there, you've seen some construction going on. So they're looking to open up next month. Their Anytime Fitness. Of course, the hotel is still under their due diligence, but I did speak with them last week, at the end of last week. They are full of flesh. They're ready to get done. Construction costs, the materials, as you know, and that type of things are putting them kind of behind eight ball at some point, but it's put a lot of businesses at that point with the cost of construction going up. But they were still pretty much confident about their starting dates and things of that nature for its timelines.
Was there a permanent, was there a final location decided for the hotel? Is it right there out in front of the Lowe's grocery store?
Not, not from a side, kind of where the CVS component of on the, on the, on the right side on Dodge Street on the corner there, right in that area.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Eric, has, has there been a information on an ice cream store moving into town? Ice cream shop? That you're aware of?
Not to my knowledge. I did speak, Logan DeZoe has spoken with an ice cream vendor in the past. To my knowledge, they have not signed a lease with him. But other than that, no, I have not heard of any of them.
I was reading online where the candy shop is actually looking to do ice cream out of there as well.
They are looking, they are going to be doing ice cream out there as well. You're correct, Russ.
Okay. And as far as existing businesses, I mean, it's getting closer to where that New Delhi shop in Casa Mexico should be getting closer to opening up. So Norma, it may be a good idea to kind of touch base with those owners and see if there's anything that can happen as far as working with them. Because I, I know they're getting closer.
I will share this if I can, Mr. Chairman, because I just came from Starbucks talking to the owner, Lisa. She is hiring. She said, you know, I know some of the students are out for school, but she's definitely hiring right now, looking to hire some more people for Starbucks.
Mr. Zino, the, I've heard talk for a couple of years now that the owner of the property where the Lowe's in the retail space there, that he's going to do a phase two. I think he's even got a board up. Have you heard anything from him, any updates from him recently as to when he might start constructing an addition?
You're correct. That talks has been going, an ongoing conversation. I have no dates from him, no, I don't know if Council Williams and I've got something before them, but no, nothing in my drawer for him.
Cool. Gage and Don, develop local infrastructure. Comments, questions, requests? Updates? Can't hear you.
You're muted, Gage. You're still muted. There you go. Nope. There.
There we go. All right. No, really, the only updates I had were a little more general and not specific to Lago. One on the infrastructure transportation side. I did, did a look at the Central Texas Regional Mobility Authority website. And I have to tell you, it was discouraging to see the lack of, of projects on their agenda for the north side of Lake Travis. It was all to, to the, to the due north of Austin or Austin proper, a little bit on the east side of Austin, but I just didn't see a lot of planned activity for what was going to happen out in the Cedar Park, Leander, Jonestown, Lago Vista area. Eric, if you're familiar with something that's there that I may have missed, that, you know, I'd sure like to see it, but it, what I, the lack of projects I saw was not very encouraging.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think Paul even talked about it, Leander. I actually had a meeting with the mayor of Leander last week. The new mayor, Christine Sidikris. And so the Cap Metro project that they're talking about would have to be put, first of all, the citizens, they have to call for a vote, so it's not even on a ballot or even been discussed, it need to be put on a ballot to, for a vote. She will have her first meeting with the Cap Metro representatives, I think she said, next month. She did share that Liberty Hill and Butte, Butte, I think was one of the, one of the cities that were looking to actually possibly get into Cap Metro. Her view at that point in time with Northland Project coming in, that project is kind of like the domain. The St. Davis Hospital facility, ACC is, has a, has a, going to be opening back up and they actually have, ACC actually has adjacent land they're going to be building some more offices that, you know, the Cap Metro was also a benefit to Leander. Now they can, can get out of it and contract Cap Metro back out, but that would be the discussion for the council and citizens of Leander at that point in time.
Well, the, the plans that I was looking at were really more streets and highway projects. And this was through the RMA website, but I mean, you know, they've got projects lined out for the next 20, 30 years. And with the growth that we're experiencing there, not to see anything for 1431 or for Loman Ford with all the population that's coming this direction is a little bit concerning. So I do think what that does is, is send a red flag up to us that we need to find out, you know, how we start to get the Lago Vista voice heard a little better at the Regional Transportation Authority.
So I would assume, Gage, that they, you know, they have public meetings like we do. I am not familiar with that process, anything about them at all. But I mean, surely they have, you know, public meetings and they have to comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act and they could take public input, even if it's as simple as as, you know, Eric, our, I mean, he's our economic development director going or any of us going, showing up with him at these meetings and just, you know, squeaky wheel gets the grease, right?
Yeah, that's exactly the phrase I was thinking of. And, you know, I'm not even sure who our right contact is with that group, you know, who we start to make our voice heard to.
Gage, perhaps between now and the next meeting, maybe, do you feel like this might be just finding out, learning a little bit more about what, how we could impact their process and get heard, how we can make some noise? Is that something you'd be interested in researching?
Absolutely. I think that that needs to be on the, on the agenda for Don and I to to tackle, to look at, you know, starting point, who do we talk to? How do we get our message out there?
And then maybe we can find out, I'm sorry, Don, maybe we can find out, just throwing this out there as an idea, you know, if we find out that, okay, they meet once a month, whatever their, their meetings are, if we can better understand their process, how much time is allocated for public input? We can see what's on their agenda and then maybe we could come up with something for Eric to recommend something to Eric to say to them, or we can assist Eric with that and speaking with him, you know, give us a couple of months. Come back to us next meeting with, okay, this is how the process works. This is what's coming on the next agenda. If we wanted to put something together and speak. I don't know, just throwing that out there, some ideas between now and next meeting. Mr. Jandro?
Okay, thank you, Gage. And I'd like to talk about the electronic infrastructure. I know it's like a broken record or something like that. But I keep insisting that that's one of the keys to our future growth and our future growth. If we do it organically, we can bring in businesses that will want to, to supply and to take care of our people because we're of higher income and greater population density and so on and so forth. But the, the electronic infrastructure continues to be a concern. I was, I was getting ready, actually a prepared part of the long message that I want to send to Ed Serna from Spectrum. But I also think that we should perhaps talk to AT&amp;T again and, and if you wouldn't mind, I might try to do that. And the reason for that is, is a couple of years ago, one of my first meetings, I brought up the, the, the subject of 5G communications and, you know, the future of all this sort of thing and the high-speed internet and all of that. high speed internet and all of that. And, uh, when we met with, uh, Spectrum and Charter, you know, they emphasized that they were, they were really interested in cable rather than in anything else. But I, I think we need to revisit that. It's, it's absolutely incumbent on us to provide all of that, uh, high speed stuff to, to, to attract the sort of, uh, new residents that we want. And I got a real surprise last Sunday. We happened to be in, uh, in Fredericksburg showing, uh, my grandkids and kids from Puerto Rico around. And I sat, uh, sat down while certain members of the party, uh, went to the little building on market plots. You, you may know what I'm talking about. The restrooms. And I was sitting in a, in a, one of their, their benches and I looked across the street. Are you able, Paul, are you able to share the screen?
I do not have that ability. I think Dave Street needs to do that.
It's not a real ability. I'll just, I'll just, uh, show it to you via the camera. I looked across the street and you know, and just him hawing around and all of a sudden something caught my attention. Let me see if I can get it.
Yeah, I see that tower right there in the middle.
That's a 5G tower. Okay. That's a 5G tower. Fredericksburg has a pop, had a population in, uh, 2010 of 10,150. They have an estimated population in 2019 of 11,500 approximately. And they have 5G. And I said, my God, that's a 5G tower. And you know, I thought, well, maybe, maybe I'm imagining things, maybe it isn't. But if there is, if that is a 5G tower, then there have to be other ones around. And guess what? I found them.
How many did you see? And, uh, were, were they, my understanding is they need to be, you know, high, just like you would think it's an antenna. What, could you hold that picture back up again, Don?
They're not, yeah, Paul, they're not high. They're, they're building height or a little higher. And as a matter of fact, in a lot of installations, they attach the, uh, you know, the, the working part to the fascia of buildings and, and things like that. They need to be, there you, there need to be several of them placed around. In other words, in critical places. But I, I went back and I looked, uh, I did my Google search, uh, for 5G in Fredericksburg, Texas. And I found out that, uh, in October of 2020, they, they, there were articles in their paper talking about how AT&T was, uh, was working out, uh, installing 5G and most of the fiber cables had been installed and so on and so forth. And the reason being is that, uh, in their business areas, you know, that they're, they're largely a tourist town focused on tourist business. And, you know, they had a problem, especially on the weekends of communications and that caused their merchants not be, not, not to be able to access the internet to do transactions and so on and so forth. And they're resolving it and the city has gotten involved in it and working with AT&T. And that kind of leads me to believe that there may be some sort of possibility. I don't know. Aren't you, aren't you surprised to see 5G towers in, in, in Fredericksburg, Texas?
I, I certainly am. I imagine all of us are. That's, that's a great lead you can follow. I mean, my gosh, you can find out who their economic development director is, reach out to them. I'm sure they know something about it. Um, there's a great lead there for you to chase down. Um. Wow. Um, boy, if we could get that out here, that would just be so good for our growth. You know, I'll share, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, you know, when you do talk to AT&T, when you, when you, when you find the appropriate contact for the 5G and you start going down that road and you, you're, you, you pinpoint who it is you need to reach out to, circle back to me, you know, at the end of the, they want, they care about revenue, right? They're not doing this out of benevolence. They want to make money. They're a profit business. And Lord knows, they need the money right now because they just, that whole AT&T Time Warner thing just collapsed on them and AT&T had to sell off a big chunk of that. But, um, where I'm at here, there's a gentleman that I, I've come to know very well. Um, and he is looking at, uh, um, there's roughly 500 acres out here. And, um, I mean, David, I think you probably know about this, Joel Scott, you know him? Uh, he's back, you know, he's got a contract now with Gula and Jim. And, um, they've got the surveys going on and they're, they're doing their assessments right now. So where I'm at, he's looking at higher density than I would like, but whatever the case, he's, there's a gentleman who's looking at developing and putting in many hundreds of houses out here on the 500 acres behind where I'm at. For those of you who don't know, this is the, uh, Shoreline Ranch, Marshall's Harbor area of Lago Vista, which is where that Mon, the Preppin, Monticchio building is. Uh, not in that area, but it's actually behind the high school where all the vacant land is, that general area. And the point of this, me bringing this up is just to remind you that AT&T Universe, they have fiber optic cable that goes from the high school. All, it runs down Loman and it goes left there at Shoreline Ranch. It goes all the way down, turns right on Austin Boulevard. It comes down near Lago Drive, but it also goes all the way down Shoreline Ranch and, uh, all the way over there to Marshall's Point. And if they know that there's a bunch of, there's a big housing development potentially going in out here, you know, it could, it could help to revigorate the interest in doing something pursuant to what your task is. So, something to keep, keep tabs on. Anybody have any comments? Mr. Williams?
Uh, Don, just wanted to let you know, uh, Spectrum has now made it mandatory for all their employees to come back into the office. So it should be easier to contact Spectrum also.
Isn't that funny?
Yeah, they, they all have to show back, they all had to show back up today. So, you know.
Isn't that funny? Because you would think that since they provide high speed internet, that they would be ones that would promote the distance working.
Yeah, that, uh, there's a lot of boo-booing going on today.
Picking back off what Paul said, there's also that other new development going up then by the airport in balconies, um, that would build, have the need for increased infrastructure as well.
Are you talking about the new community, community NEU?
Yes. Am I misunderstanding what's happening there?
No, but, but Gage, uh, Gage tuned, you know, turned that on. They're tuning me into that. And that's amazing. They, they have two communities, that one and then one, uh, between the hollows and Jonestown, south of, uh, south of Reed Park Road.
These are the modular homes.
Oh, I've heard about the modular homes. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a.
Yes, I've actually reached out to them about joining the chamber and possibly being on our coffee with the chamber in, um, in August.
This, it's, it's very interesting. Uh, it's NEU communities and, uh, it's a whole planned community thing, uh, based on modular construction. And it includes all the services and, 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 you know, Gage, it practically has everything that you could want, right? I mean, you know, good luck getting there, but it's quite a deal. Do you have anything further to say on it?
They won't have 5G unless Don gets it done. So they're rooting for you, Don.
We'll see.
All right. Let's move on to, uh, Brian and, uh, recommend, uh, government policies, programs. Is there anything that, uh, you care to share with us or have any questions for the committee?
Um, I, I, I haven't been able to get as much of an update. I mean, or do as much research as I'd hoped, um, but I was able to do a little bit of a preliminary research on forming, um, the economic development, um, corporations. Of course, there, there's two, two types of corporations, a type A and a type B. Both would have to be voted in by, you know, the citizens of Lago Vista. Um, the type A is more, more geared around kind of attracting, uh, research and development type businesses, whereas a type B will give, give us, um, a little bit more flexibility. Um, and then, um, there are some federal and state level grants that could help fund, um, any economic development corporation that, that we would form. Um, so, but that's about all I was able to get to.
Cool. Thanks. And, uh, I, I'd like to add a couple of things on, on this, um, that I think could just kind of an update up to the committee. Uh, so we had the, uh, we being, um, all of the committee and commission chairs of Lago Vista, including, um, our Lions Club president, uh, Don Jandro and our ESD one fire chief, um, Donnie Norman. Um, we all had the opportunity to interview the city, make the final three city manager candidates last week. And, um, as it pertains to, uh, what, uh, Mr. Fidel is tasked with, um, which is researching other cities, for examples of non-traditional ways of creating an economic development corporation. One of the questions I asked of the three candidates was, uh, have any, in your services to your, to your respective cities, have any of you overseen the creation of, um, an economic development corporation? And all three said yes, which is good. Um, though we don't know, uh, who the city has currently made the offer to or who they've negotiated with, we know that whoever the, whoever we contract with should have some experience in the creation of an economic development corporation. Um, and let me see, let me see. Oh, and just one other thing, just on that topic reminds me, um, on the broadband internet thing, uh, there was one candidate we spoke with, um, a lady named Tracy. Hopefully, um, she was our unanimous pick, uh, for who we wanted to see the council, um, make an offer to. Um, I don't know if that's who they made the offer to, but she had commented to, uh, Donnie Norman and I that she was on some type of a board or a consoratorium of, of, uh, of people who dealt with broadband internet, the development of broadband internet in the city that she came from. So if that is who they made the offer to, and if, and if she accepts, then that could be helpful to us and, uh, and Don and getting the broadband internet all moving forward. Um, if, does anybody else have anything to say or comment on, on, uh, government policy program? Okay, okay. Then moving to Robin. Uh, Robin, uh, promote, advocate Lago Vista?
I have some interesting, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I was trying to make these kind of brief, there are two things I wanted to say. Um, we went to Colorado for weeks for various reasons. And one of the things we did was we went to have lunch with a friend at a place called, uh, Boulder, Chautauqua Boulder Park. And I don't know anything about the tacos, but in the, in the late 1800s, there was a shop of people traveled across the country giving, uh, lectures and, and various activities. Out of that, two really big companies, one is Chautauqua, in Chautauqua, New York, and the other is in Boulder. We were sitting in Boulder and I looked around and thought, I could be sitting in Lago Vista because we have this absolutely beautiful place. And these taco places bring in millions of dollars and they are not, they are not huge towns. They're really very small towns, probably about the same size. Boulder, the part, this is a separate part of Boulder that is not part of Boulder City. And Chautauqua, New York, I think maybe they have 7,000 people ears, ear out. But go, go take a look at, at the website of those Chautauques and someday let's take a look at the kinds of things that are done are lectures, um, have a symphony that plays, they have, so it's, it's really very, um, focused on the arts, but also on intellectual things. And they always usually have great, uh, series every week, series every week for five weeks. Um, it's, so this was very interesting. And then after that, so there's a little group that is coming, that is, uh, has four in Lago Vista called Be the Bridge. Any of you aware of that? It's an, it's an organization that's a national organization. It's an issue to try to deal with, um, the kinds of problems that come up in schools, ra, dealing with racial issues. And they've, they have a, uh, a booth at the, every, one, one Sunday a month at the, at the farm, farm markets, they have this event. Um, they're very interesting. And so last night I was in a meeting with them because they have a, they're looking to maybe use space in our church for some things. And there were six young women who, who have children who are, one person is part of it because she's just interested. The others all have kids in schools in Lago Vista. And they were very interesting. I said, why, why? And all of them have moved theirs. The longest is four years. Most of them have come in the last or two, three years. So why did you come to Lago Vista? And the immediate answer was, I want my children to be growing up in a place like this and not in, not in a development, not in a big city. Should, they want a place where they're surrounded by beauty and they are really a, a small, a small school. And, but that was really interesting. Um, pretty much the, the idea that they really were looking for was an environment where it was peaceful. And that's what they found in Lago Vista. Um, so I asked them about the development and there were a few things I said, so if you, if you had a choice of some kind of business in Lago Vista, looking at the kind of environment you like, what would you look for? The first thing said was, there needs to be more playgrounds because there's, there are a lot more kids coming into Lago Vista now. And it's very difficult for a good, so they had, all of them talked about a, a playground in Rock, in Rock, in Round Rock that is also, uh, able easily ease for children who are disabled, are able to go easily. That was a very, that bit. Um, and then it came to, they would like to see a micro brew. Uh, we've, we've talked about that before, that that was something that, that, that could be that. Um, they would like, the, the, all of them at once said, can't there be a development on Don Drive? I just thought that was really interesting that those five young women are like, we would like to see something happen on Dong Drive where there would be a lot of things where we could shop. Um, I know there are a lot of issues about that, but there are also, maybe there's some options that, that could be done. There was the thing, one said, we, we really cool if there was a, the one, one young woman said, if there were a better grocery store, I would never leave Lago. That's the one place that she finds that she has to go because they want better, better produce and some kind of things that you might get at, at, um, Central Market or, or, uh, and then they're not happy with the Whole Foods things in Cedar Park because it's not the same. So that was kind of interesting. And then one of the, the other thing was they would really love to see a really good restaurant, not a chain, but a local, I would, it sounded to me like a steakhouse that had really great steaks that you could go and have a really great evening and it's close by. Now, some of the things at the golf clubs may have that ability, but at the moment that's not the same thing. And then there was the other thing that, um, it would be really great to have a chance to have a, a place where you could actually go and have dinner and have wine. So it's just, it's really interesting.
Anybody have any? I, I, I'll share something, um, that I've become privy to is, uh, some of you may have, have seen this. The, uh, Rolling Hills Church on Loman's Ford, they're going to start a private school, uh, K through second. And the lady who is going to start that, she. she told my wife that they, when she put that up, she already had 45 families reach out to her. That's a business. So, I'll share that with you. You know, everything you mentioned, I can't help but observe, Robin, is, it's, it's what we talked about in one of our first meetings. And i- it's about, people don't want to have to leave Lago Vista. And everything from the town in Colorado, the town in Colorado, you know, that's your destination city. People go there for, for that, but it's about having everything here that people don't have to leave.
People who live in Chautauqua live there for that reason. I mean, there are people who live there year round. It isn't only that, but.
I, I, personally, I think, I don't want to oversimplify it, but it seems to me that one of the biggest attractions should be development of trails, that trail system that we're working on that goes over there at the Pony's Canyon that goes all the way over here to Lowman's. I don't know if you guys even know that there's a trail system in the works, the city's working on. And I think it was before last city manager left, there was a meeting that where the, there was something done at city council to give the city fidelity to allocate the land for that trail. But, you know, part of the economic development is having all these trails and these parks. Like, Robin was saying, one, my wife and I were at a softball game in Georgetown over the weekend. And, you know, we're always reminded every time we go there, just how nice the parks and the trails are. So.
Just one thing, I don't know if Nate Williams is still here, but St. Peter's Church is on, we just created a labyrinth and Stations of the Cross Trail. Had an event in the worst of rain.
Excuse me, real quick, Don, did you need that from your mic? Would you mind muting? Don Jondro?
Me?
Yes, please. Thank you. You were saying, Robin, about St. Peters?
St. Peters, we, we have, we have created what we call the community park. Because we have, I think it's about two or three acres of really beautiful place and there are trails through there. And there's, there's one that's trail called the Stations of the Cross, but a lot of people just walk it because it's through the woods and it's so pretty. And the labyrinth is, is something that's historically, I mean, thousands of years have been there. So we got a grant from our diocese to build this, this, and it's, we've been seeing people are actually coming and walking through there. It's, most people don't even know that that's a place. It actually, I think there, it's one of the tourist highest places in Lago and you can look down on the lake. It's really beautiful.
Meredith, are you, Meredith, are you the one who manages the city website?
Yes.
Maybe perhaps you and Robin could get together and, and maybe promote that trail in some capacity or another, perhaps? Just a thought.
Sure. I'll, I'll call you, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, I can do that. Anyway, I was very interested in these young women. They're, they are dedicated to living here and making it better in all ways, which is really encouraging.
It is. Thank you very much, Robin. Okay, if, does anybody else have anything they want to speak to on Robin's?
I, I did go to the grand opening of that trail system and that park and it's open to the general public. So it is something that would be nice for people to know about. And that trail system is pretty nice. Jennifer was there also from the, from the chamber.
Right, she, yeah, she was.
Yeah.
The other thing for Dawn, and if we can get this, we would do the same. The whole park is, you can, it's, your wifi is available free. So if you want to go and sit on one of our tables or sit in, in a bench and have, you know, even talk, do things on your, you can do it in that park because it's all there.
That's great.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, I think that closes out all of our discussion items. Before we go into future meetings, I do want to just speak real quick with regards to our Chamber of Commerce. Jennifer, is there anything that, if you're still on, Jennifer, is there anything that you'd like to bring up, share with, or ask of this committee?
As of right now, no, but I definitely will have some stuff for next meeting.
Awesome. Well, I'd like to tell you that I've seen the, the, the marketing going on on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce with the emails especially and the content, and I applaud you for what you're doing with it and keep up the great work.
Thank you. That's, that was, the first word was getting the buzz out. So that's what I'm working on now and then adding value.
Yeah, that's great. Keep at it, you know? Don't give up.
Will do.
Can I get on that email list with the chamber?
Yes. Who, who was that?
Russ Murphy.
Okay, I will get you added on.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I'll just say it real quick. Jennifer, would you just like to tell everybody what the next couple of events are hosted by the chamber? I would encourage all of you, being members of our committee, you know, just, just like we find value in having Jennifer at these meetings. I, I think you could, you would, we could all find value in participating in what she's hosting and doing. Jennifer, what are the next two meetings coming up for which you are not sold out of tickets yet?
So on, we have the luncheon on the 16th. It's the June luncheon. It will be at the Villa Antones. And that's from 11:30 to 1:00. And we actually do not have a limit on that, so hopefully we do not sell out. And then of course, every first Thursday, we have the coffee with the chamber that we're still doing virtually. And then the third Wednesday is when we have the luncheon. So right now, those are the two events. I'm looking at starting in July, bringing back more of a happy hour networking event. Probably once Casa Mexico opens up, that would be our first location. And yes, they do have a liquor license.
And margaritas.
And, and I will be reaching out to, we will have the groundbreaking for the new brewery. And we're just kind of, you know, waiting and I'm getting with Mr. Casey on when we'll be able to do that. So I will be reaching out to the city for y'all's attendance. And we do, you know, we'll have the sub shop ribbon cutting coming up as well as Casa Mexico. So we definitely have some things coming. We're just waiting on exact dates.
Thank you. Jennifer, and would you, does anybody not know what Villa Antones is? Anybody not know about it? Russ is.
It is absolutely gorgeous.
I know where it is, but I've never set foot or anything. I just see the sign when I drive up 1431.
Yes, it's, so get on and register. It's northlaketravis.chamber.org. But it's, it's a beautiful, I mean, it's in there, we're actually scheduling that after the luncheon, that she'll do some tours. So if you've never been, it's a great opportunity to go out.
Russ, Dan and I are going, if you and Chelsea want to join us, we'll be going. Okay, thank you very much, Jennifer. Future, future meetings. Does anybody have anything that they would like? Yes, Meredith?
Excuse me, if, if I may, I have a couple of items I might like to share with the committee.
Yes.
If y'all are interested. Okay. We had talked about the transportation in the area and whatnot. I do have a weekly report of ridership from Cat Metro. Let me see if I can pull that back up there. Oh, let's see, where did I go? Okay, here we are. So this is a weekly update that I received from them and it gives us a list of two, four, six, eight different towns or cities in the area where they have the Cat Metro pickup service. And for average passengers per hour, they give a listing for all of these towns. Our average number of passengers per hour was 2.1, whereas Flugerville was 1.3. Let's see, four week average is 1.1 an hour, where East Austin is 1.3 and Flugerville is .8. And so that's what we're looking at right now, average response time. Anything that's actually greater than 15 minutes, they try to keep ride service to pick you up, you know, from your home or to take you home. Once you make the call on your cell phone, they try to get there in under 15 minutes. So they've only gone over that amount of time, 4.7% of the time, which shows really good because they're learning the community better. It was a little tough at first, learning all the ins and outs and the hills and whatnot. So that's, that's looking good. What they do say is, you know, the way we can get more service is to show that we are getting rides. So I know there are a lot of people still in the community who aren't even aware that this service exists or they might have seen the buses, but they're not quite sure what pickup service is. If we want to get the, the word out there, that would be great. I know it would help our citizens who, who need it. I've heard a lot of people who say they've taken their car in to get fixed and were able to take the pickup service back home. And, and I asked where the rides are going to and from and they said Dollar General, Lowe's, and doctor's offices. So that's real good. And the library too. There are people who usually go to the library. He was also saying that he does have his regulars who come all the time and that's getting a lot of new riders too. So the numbers that they're showing, they're not necessarily all regular riders. So I wanted to let you know about that. On the website, we do have four residents. And if you click on that section of our website, it'll show you everything, transportation. And it'll show you our Route 214 bus that goes through Lago Vista, Jonestown, all that. And it does show the pickup service. So that's good. The other thing I just wanted to remind everyone is that the Lowman Ford Rehab Paving Project is starting this Sunday, June 13th. The work will mostly be done at night. So beginning at 8:00 PM till 6:00 AM, I believe. 6:00 AM. So we can expect lane closures 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM every morning, or, you know, every day, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Be paving one side of the road at a time. We do ask if there's any way, if you're bebopping around town, to consider that and maybe take other roads if at all possible. We've got crews out there. There'll be signs. There'll be all sorts of things happening. Once the paving is complete, and that's Bennett Paving Company who's doing the work, once that's complete, then the city comes back in and striping begins. And there will be other things going in like the, the reflective tabs and all, and all that sort of thing. We have an article on the website sent out to all the president's council people. We have a short little video about it. So it's out there. If anybody that you've spoken to doesn't know about that yet, just send them over to the website. It's in the newsletter and let them know work is going to be going on through the month of June. And, you know, good paving days are good weather days. So we had a lot of rain last week. And so we pushed the start date to this Thursday rather than last, or this Sunday rather than last Sunday. So hopefully we'll get it done by the end of June and by the Fourth of July, of course. We know that it affects our businesses in town. So I have been in communication with Jennifer at the chamber and even put together a little digital thank you card from the city and that, you know, we're making a smoother road to their front door. That's the update. And if you all have any questions, you can get in touch with me or Eric at Public Works and we'll get those questions answered.
Thank you, Meredith. Mr. Zino?
Meredith, feel free to share that pickup truck with the committee from Cat Metro. Please go ahead and share that. And also can you touch on the Fourth of July? Maybe some people on the call might not want to talk, know about the Fourth of July.
Okay, the Fourth of July council, council volunteers here, it's a community group and they are putting on the Fourth of July Day of Celebration, all day activities. There's going to be a 5K. There'll be the parade. There's going to be a band, some food trucks and fireworks down in Barcade Park. I'm not, I'm not certain of everything that they're going to have, but that's what I know so far. And I've been working with some of the people on the, on their council to get them set up and make sure that they've, you know, got all the permits in place and the insurance and everything like that. So that's what I know so far. If you want information about what they're doing, if you want to get in touch with them, their website is lagovistajuly4.org.
I know they're promoting heavily on Facebook too. Mr. Williams?
I'm pretty sure that I've heard that the fireworks will be on July 3rd and not on the 4th.
Yes, thank you.
This year.
Yes, and in Barcade Park.
Yeah, will be, everything will be on the 3rd.
What was the other item, Eric? I'm sorry.
You said, you said about Cat Metro?
Oh, to share the, right, right. I.
I don't have the ability to share the screen.
You do have the ability?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just email it to the committee, that'll be fine.
I will do so, yes.
Thank you.
Meredith, you know, on these agenda items, I think it's, I think you should be under our business items where you can share all these things with us going forward. Is that okay with you?
Terrific. Yes, I would love to.
Thank you very much. That's great. Okay.
I can say one thing, and I'm, I'm sorry, I know you kind of asked earlier if I had anything to say. And I've talked to David and Eric about it. You know, and I know that y'all are kind of looking for some spots to move more of your storefront permitting to, for the city. Have y'all ever thought of the corner lot on Lowman's in 1431 and almost kind of making it a city center there instead of looking at off of Don Drive?
You know, that.
So when people are driving through.
So Jennifer, that question is, is for, for Mr. Williams.
Okay.
Don't have that as a discuss, I want to try to be mindful of the things we talk about on the agenda. While I think that's a great question for him. I, it's not, since it's not on the agenda, I don't know that it's appropriate for the city council liaison to the non-agenda items. Mr. Williams, if, if, if I'm being overly cautious and you want to answer her question, then please feel free to.
I'll, I'll get back to her on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to future agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to, to have on the agenda for our July meeting? Anything at all? Any ideas? Yes, Mr. Jondro? You're muted. You're muted, Don.
I think that definitely after the meetings began with a, with a subcommittee that Mr. Williams was talking about, that that will have a considerable impact on the way we take a look at things. Because I, you know, I somehow or another foresee that this is going to be entwined, not only for office space, but also maybe for the future development of town centers, business districts, that sort of thing. So I think that definitely should be a part of the, of the next meeting.
I, I agree with you, Don. It's my intention, what I'm going to, what, unless there's objection from two or more of you or substantial reason, otherwise, it's my intention to just kind of leave this agenda item on going forward so that, for obvious reasons. Actually, another item. Where was it? The. I do want to ask you, Eric, for our next, for our next meeting, do we need? do we need to leave, uh, you know, uh, our today's agenda item number five update from Eric regarding NSP? Do we, do you anticipate having anything from NSP for our next agenda as of today? Or would you like to just touch base prior to the next meeting? That we can go from there?
Yeah, Paul, I would hope to have something back. Definitely touch base with them prior to that to make sure they're, 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 they have sent that or, you know, have made an update. But yes, I would expect to have something back. Um, they talked about again, coming out with me doing a tour, but they had the information from you guys that presented that at the last meeting about the areas and the buildings. So they kind of was working with their, um, team to do that. So I don't know if I would be doing a tour with them or not. But I hope to have
It, it would be great if maybe at the next meeting, at the least, if you could, if they would, uh, do you the courtesy of letting you know when they expect to put a formal quote in front of you by. That would be good. We need to get that signage done, and without their quote, we're really, we need to look at their quote to figure out where the other options are from there.
I'll get a firm date from it. Thank, I'll share with you.
Thank you very much. A couple notes I made to myself for the next one. We've got Meredith as a business item. What about, you know, in terms of economic development, one of the things we've talked about in the past is, you know, what are those, what are those other things that we can do to bring in outside dollars? What are those, some of those things, you know, we, we've got Lago Fest, right? Do we, as a, as a committee, should we be coming up with any ideas for any types of festivals? You know, and I'm thinking in turn, I don't want to overthink this, but, uh, you know, you think of, uh, like South by Southwest in Austin, you know, it's just a big, huge, bring in the money, right? Um, Lago Fest is our closest equivalent of something of that. Should we, should we as a committee be coming up with ideas for things that could bring in outsiders? You know, some type of festivals? Should, is that something we should discuss? I don't know. I'm not seeing any movement, so I'm assuming no. If any of you guys have any ideas?
Put it on the agenda, let people think about it till this, interesting idea.
So you know, just, so I think, I think the idea would be something like, uh, ideas for festival ideas for Lago Vista, annual festival ideas, or something of that nature. Okay.
So is there not a, a committee already formed underneath the city of Lago Four? I mean, I hear we have the Fourth of July Committee, we have, you know, other, maybe it's Parks and
Not to mine, um. I don't think there's any, any committees in Lago Vista that have anything, no, no is the answer to your question.
Good call, Paul. That's a big gap.
Yeah, let's fill it with some ideas for these guys.
I know that the chamber's looking at Lago Fest.
Williams, you're, it looks like you're, you've got something you're thinking about.
I mean, we do have, we have a committee for Lago Fest. But, uh, we don't have a committee that's designed for other festivals or other events that could be happening. It takes a considerable amount of energy to put on Lago Fest, so.
You could create a Chautauqua and see what happens for, for two days.
Yeah.
Different.
Yeah, just, let, let, so I'll put something on agenda. If everybody, if all of you could just kind of rack your brains, maybe research, you know, consider that we don't have really much lodging here. So
My thing, yeah, yeah.
You know, what is something that would draw in at least people from Cedar Park, Leander, Lago Vista? Um, so let's just be thinking about that. And I'll, I'll put something on that, on the agenda to address this. If you have any other ideas or anything you'd like to see on the agenda, um, you know, we're an advisory committee. If you want to formalize some type of recommendation, you've got an idea that you think should be formalized in, in the form of recommendation to council. Let me know, and we can talk about getting it on the agenda. And if there is nothing else, and somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn, we can entertain that motion.
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? I see Mr. Gage's hand raised, second. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion is passed. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your volunteering on the committee. Thank you for your time today. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll see you. We're going at the next Chamber of Commerce in the Fourth of July Festival.
Thank you. Bye-bye.